All right, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the October 25th Planning Commission meeting. And I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask Commissioner Opal to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, please leave all ready and join in. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To our fellow citizens, one nation, and for the good of all.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Opel. And Madam Secretary, can we have the roll, please?
Please let the record show that all Planning Commissioners are present with the exception of Vice Chair Donner.
Great, thank you. Moving on to our first item of business, and I believe Commissioner Dingra, you have been sworn in, if I'm not mistaken?
Yes, I am.
But I want to welcome you to the Dana Point Planning Commission. I watched the interviews and was very impressed with your background and look forward to working closely with you during your time here.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to Item A, Approval of the Minutes. Can I get a motion or does anybody have any changes?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor, please vote.
I abstained because I wasn't there.
Perfect. Do you have your voting button? So you touch the screen there? If you touch the LED screen itself right in the middle. Brenda, could you?
This one?
Higher up.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Technology. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that item passes three to one with three, one and oh with Commissioner Dingra abstaining because he was not here, which now moves us on to public comments. I know we have some speakers tonight for various items. Do we have any other public comments that you're aware of?
No, Chair Nelson.
Okay, I'm just going to go ahead and read this now then. So anyone that is wishing to address the Planning Commission during the public comment section or on an agenda item is asked to complete a request to speak form that is available at the door. The completed form is to be submitted to the Planning Commission Secretary prior to any individual being heard by the Planning Commission. Any person wishing to address the Planning Commission on a subject other than those scheduled on the agenda is requested to do so at this time. In order to have an overall time limit of 15 minutes for public comment portion of the agenda, and state law prohibits the Planning Commission from taking action on a specific item unless it appears on the posted agenda. Seeing that we have none of those, we're going to move on to our consent calendar. Does anybody want to have this item pulled from the consent? Eric Nunn, can I get a motion?
I motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
All right, please vote. Perfect. All right, and I'd like to ask the Commission on item, let me do a little reshuffling here on the agenda if possible and pull up new business, which is Item 7, and that is the Historic Designation. If we could move that to the top of the agenda as opposed to putting it on the end of agenda, since it should be relatively quick and we've got a couple of other items to go through. Is there any objection to that? No? All right. No, we're good. So that would bring us to Item 7, which is Item 1 now. A Request for Historic Resource Designation and Participation in the Mills Act Program at 24422 Santa Clara and Historic Resource Application HRA 21-0001. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, we do. John Champa, Senior Planner, provide a staff report.
Good evening, Chair Nelson and Planning Commissioners. John Champa, I'm the case planner for the request for Historic Resources Application for the property located at 24422 Santa Clara. Here we have the city map locating the property. The house on it was originally constructed in 1929. The property is located within Dana Point Specific Plan and it is zoned within the Specific Plan Residential Medium Density within the coastal overlay. It is a bluff lot that overlooks the Dana Point Harbor. Here you can see some old photos and aerial photo of the property. It is in its original configuration with a detached three garage and then the main residence behind, adjacent to the bluff. Staff head has completed a site visit of the property and has confirmed that the historic inventory assessment of the property, that the property is still in its same configuration and condition. And just to give you a little background on the property, it was originally identified on the historic inventory back in 1997 as stated, identifying the subject property, its designation criteria of several criteria identified in the city's historic ordinance, given that its time period of development during our earliest period of development in the 1920s and 30s, as well as its association with Cindy Woodruff, one of the main developers within the community, and its architectural style of the Spanish colonial revival. The property owner is requesting the structure be added to the city's historic registry as well as to the Mills Act. So the recommendation before you is to add the, or to adopt the draft resolution as well as add the structure to the historic, city's historic registry, and then make a recommendation to the City Council to authorize the participation of the property under the Mills Act, which is approved by the City Council. So that concludes staff's presentation. Staff and the property owner are available for any questions you may have.
Great, thank you. Do we have any questions from?
I don't have any questions.
I have one question. That was just the checklist, because I saw that the project met, was it one, two, three, four, five of the criteria. There was one on there, though, it felt like it would meet that criteria. I was just curious why it didn't meet H, if you have, if you know.
I don't have H in front of me, however, the historic inventory assessment that was completed in 1997 identified those criteria. However, there, it is possible that H could qualify as well.
Okay, yeah, it was a building retaining original integrity and/or illustrating a given period, not critical to my decision, but just was curious why it didn't make that list, because it felt like in everything else it met the, that it retained its original integrity from all, you know, exterior points of view at least.
Yeah, based on my site visit as well as the records research as part of this, I would say that that would definitely be an additional qualifying classification, given it is essentially in its original configuration and the property owners are undergoing rehabilitation efforts to restore some of those original features that have suffered neglect over the years. So I would say that we'll be including that criteria as well when it's moving forward to City Council if recommended.
Okay, great, thank you. And we have no questions, so do we have any people wishing to speak on this? I don't believe so, right? No. So we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the Commission for Discussion and Recommendation. All good, I'll lead off on this. I am, you know, I'll lead off for a couple reasons. One, I think it's really great to try to preserve history in our structures, especially ones like these that are tied distinctly to our town with, you know, the original development that occurred. And preserving these things is an important part of, you know, preserving the past as we move into the future. So I'm in full support of the recommendation and the, of the adding the home to the historic register and the recommendation to the Council to add it to the Mills Act as well.
Yeah, I want to just echo the Chair's comments and thank the Lambert family for your willingness to preserve a little bit of Dana Point's history. It's greatly appreciated and, you know, I've walked by your house dozens and dozens of times and it's, it's a pretty majestic place, so I applaud you for all your efforts. Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments?
No comments.
Nope. Anybody for a motion?
I'll make a motion for the request to, for the Historical Resource Designation Participation in the Mills Act Program at 24422 Santa Clara, the Historic Resource Application HRA 21-0001.
I will second that motion. Go ahead and vote. All right, that item passes. Congratulations and thank you for preserving the past, which will now bring us back to the next item on our agenda, which is... Public hearing for item number four, which is Coastal Development Permit CDP 21-0007, Site Development Permit SDP 21-0019, Minor Conditional Use Permit CUP 21-0008M for a new 57-room hotel, 4,000-square-foot restaurant space and outdoor dining, 40-bed hostel, visitor center, retaining walls greater than 30 inches in height, and tandem parking for employees' valet, also known as the Wave Resort at the Headlands Commercial Site. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, John Champa will provide a staff report.
Good evening, Chair Nelson and Planning Commissioners. John Champa, I'm the case planner for the Wave Resort. The property is located within the Headlands Development Conservation Plan or HDCP. Standards that do apply to this project are the HDCP as well as the Dana Point Zoning Code. The site is zoned within the Specific Plan Visitor, Visitor Recreational Commercial Uses and is located at the frontage along Pacific Coast Highway as well as Green Lantern. Just to give you a little summary of the project, the project site is located within the appeals jurisdiction of the Coastal Commission. The project includes a 35,000-square-foot two-story building with subterranean parking as well as a 57-room hotel. Correction to the staff report is not 40 beds for the hostel, but 52, as well as a 4,000-square-foot restaurant with outdoor dining, a visitor's center, retaining walls over 30 inches in height, which is requiring the site development permit as well as the development of the project, and tandem parking, tandem and valet parking, which require the minor conditional use permit. So just to give you a little background on this project, it has some history with the city. Back in July 10th, 2017, it was approved by the city's Planning Commission. It was subsequently appealed to City Council by the Surf Rider Foundation, where it was reviewed by the City Council on October 3rd of 2017 and approved. The approval was appealed by the Surf Rider Foundation to the Coastal Commission, which was reviewed by the Coastal Commission on August 1st, 2018, which Coastal Commission did approve. There have been time extensions that have been issued to this project over the course of that time period since then, and December 9th with the extension of the Coastal Commission approvals, as well as the January 25th where extensions were issued by the city's entitlements of the site development permit and the minor conditional use permit. The entitlements did expire on August 11th for the Coastal Development Permit issued by the Coastal Commission, therefore this project is before you today. Project is in compliance with the applicable development standards. It should be noted that the design of the project has not been modified since the Coastal Commission approval. As you can see here, it complies with all the necessary development standards, including setbacks, height, lot coverage, floor ratio, total building square footage, landscape, as well as parking. Here we have the lowest level, lowest parking level, as well as you can see in the southeast corner, the first level of the hostel. Then we progress to the, kind of the entry main level, which we have some of the retail components, visitor lobby area, as well as the second floor of the hostel. Here it does illustrate six parking spaces that are designated for coastal access parking along the Shoreline Drive area, and you can see designated in green arrows the access to the trails, as well as an additional above and beyond the required HDCP regulations and additional six spaces along the Green Lantern frontage. So those are specified and designated per the request of the Coastal Commission. Here we have the, the upper level, or the first level of the hotel rooms with the pool deck, and then we have the top level of the rooms above the pool deck, so this is the uppermost floor of the hotel. So here illustrated is two different, two different elevations. One is the, on the top image is facing PCH, and then the, the lower image is face, from the view facing the project from Green Lantern. So as you can see here, it does comply with the necessary 35-foot height requirement as illustrated here along all points of the development. Here we have two other elevations of the project. The top image is, would be facing the existing retaining wall to the site, so it'd be facing west, and then we have the, we have the lower image, which is facing the northern elevation of the site, as stated, project complies with the necessary 35-foot height requirements here as well. And as previously stated, the project, there are no modifications to the project design. This is the same as what was approved by Planning Commission, City Council, as well as the Coastal Commission. Here, just to give you a closer layout of the hostel, back when it first came to the Planning Commission, it was proposed as 40 beds, however, some discussion there, the applicant decided that there was opportunity to provide additional beds, so this have been incorporated in the project design that was viewed by the City Council as well as the Coastal Commission at 52 beds. So there are two levels of that on the southeast corner of the, of the site. So as stated, there's 52 beds for the hostel. The project also includes a visitor's center that's on-site, which is specified and required per the HDCP. The hostel provides the necessary lower-cost overnight accommodations, which were specified in the HDCP and is a requirement of the Coastal Commission. Conditions of approval require the recalculation of this, those room rates every three years to ensure that they are updated and consistent with the, the appropriate fees for, based on the Coastal Commission guidance. So in conclusion, as stated, there are no proposed design changes to the project. It is consistent with the requirements in the HDCP as well as the city's zoning ordinance. It provides the required Coastal Commission elements, and it meets all the necessary findings. So that concludes staff's presentation. Staff and the architect are available for any questions you may have on the project.
Great, thank you. Any questions for staff commissioners?
No questions.
Questions. Commissioner Opel?
John, I have a few questions with regards to the resolution. I just think some items didn't get updated from the original issuance. So I apologize. So on page 15, it had Condition 17, Building shall comply with the 2016 edition of the Building Code, and I think you guys have adopted it 2019. Okay, and then Item 31, it talks about something currently to be constructed in late 2018, about the connections, utility connections on PCH. So it's that same page that was on, but it was Condition 31. Then I have a question on Condition 32, as trees planned as part of this project shall not impact any public views. How is public views defined? Or, I mean, if I'm sitting at the pool and a tree's blocking my view, is that a public view? You know, I just want to make sure it has some type of a criteria established with it.
I'll have to look, I'll have to look at the public views definition. I know that Pacific Coast Highway is designated as a public view corridor, so we'll be looking at it from designated public view corridors as established through the HDCP, as well as in the city's general plan, if there are any. So if it were to block private view, that would be something that would not be factored in. It would be assessing that based on the, the public views designated in the appropriate documents.
All right, I appreciate that. And then trying to figure out my last question here. So on 114, it talks about the, the low cost, it says to determine the low-cost overnight accommodation rate of each bed. It refers back to an October 26, 2016, public workshop. Staff report, is that still tied to that document?
Yes, however, if there's an updated guidance provided by the Coastal Commission, it's to refer to that updated guidance.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you very much, John.
Commissioner Gabbard?
Yeah. Thanks, John, for your, for your staff report. I just want to start off with saying that both you and the applicant have done a fabulous job of trying to take a very difficult piece of property and try to get something done with it, and I applaud both of your efforts. I still struggle with coinc, or the conflict between the project as presented and, you know, just the, the letter of what the Visitors Recreation Commercial Center was supposed to be, as it's outlined in the Headlands Development and Conservation Plan. You know, it was clearly so supposed to be to provide services and goods, and I'm reading right out of the, the guidelines, services and goods for the neighborhood residents and for the general visitors. And when I look at that ground floor, and it was supposed to be retail and, and public courtyards and plazas, it just doesn't look like that's what's happening. So I struggle with that, but, and I'm just trying to give you where my head is in all of this. The, the concern that I have is that if we, if we approve this and we say, well, well, it doesn't exactly meet the HDCP guideline, or the, the guidelines, it doesn't absolutely meet it, we end up with a, you know, we end up with a project that, or a piece of property that's never going to get developed. And I just, I think that if, to get this thing over the finish line, what we're going to need to do is incorporate all of the special conditions that were, that were articulated by the Coastal Commission, have those included in the resolution, so that at least there's some cover to say, not only have we looked at it, but the Coastal Commission's looked at it, and that, you know, it can go forward with, under those set, special set of conditions. So that's, that's just where I am right now, but I want to listen to what the public has to say and we can take it from there.
All right, so I'm going to open the public hearing. We have two speakers tonight, and we'll start with Rick Erkanov. Evening.
Good evening. May I take off my mask?
Sure.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Again, my name's Rick Erkanov, lucky to, next year being my 50-year of living here in Dana Point, proud to be from Dana Point and live here. The project as it is right now has some fatal flaws, and I'm going to go briefly through them, and I'm glad that Commissioner Gabbard identified some of those. When you look at what the, what, how we got to the 2004 decision for the Headlands Development and Conservation Plan, that was whittled down from, you know, decades prior of planning, and very specifically in many locations within that document, it states a total of 125 homes, A, singular, 65 to 90-room key seaside inn, and then the visitor recreation and commercial uses, and then all of those are defined, all right? So, and there's charts that also show a maximum of 90 keys, and so just going beyond the 90 keys for those two sets of property is a fatal flaw. Within that Planning Area 4, it does state that the area will be complementing adjacent to our town-city. It can be one or more buildings and blah, blah, blah. But the first floor is limited to retail, commercial uses, including a visitor information center, and the second floor can support retail, commercial, and professional uses. So I kind of look at the definition of a hotel and just rooms up on the second floor, and that is in complete conflict. Another item is the visitor recreation facility shall, shall have diversified, low-cost public programs to attract visitors. The facility shall be designed as a destination point for the public trail system. Okay, so again, we know the trails end on the backside there, and that being hidden by a hotel property, I don't really see that as being kind of like a gateway into the town center. Another real specific goal is 4-89, and again, for Planning Area 4, it will provide services and goods to neighborhood residents and the general visitors. So again, I fail to understand how another hotel with rooms beyond what was part of the plan is beneficial to the residents. Also, there's a lot of other conditions, and I don't really want to get too far into the weeds, but there's not supposed to be any drinking establishments there, so is the hotel going to be a dry hotel? Is that what's considered there? So, you know, I, again, I appreciate Commissioner Gabbard for bringing up what I believe is the single largest fatal flaw is that the fact that it's beyond the 90 keys for the two properties, among a variety of other things. Appreciate your, your consideration for rejecting what's before you. Thank you very much and look forward to your discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then next, we've got Todd Stoughton, God, I'm sorry, Stoughton, Todd, I can't say it, my apologies. I'll just let you say it.
Todd Stoughton-Burrell.
There you go. That's what I was going to say.
Last time I was before you, I didn't have gray hair, okay? I do now. I've been working on this project for about 14 years. This project has passed every test, every scrutiny that any project could imagine. It's been approved unanimously by this body, approved unanimously by the City Council, and approved unanimously by the Coastal Commission. It satisfies every iota of every report, every way you could scrutinize this project. Everybody's looked at it over and over. We were all ready to build this project. We met with the city, we had drawings already to do excavation after we were approved, and then this happened. And the bankers decided, well, you know, we can't fund any projects, and we had a whole hiatus. And that hiatus, we had, we couldn't work on the project, you know, the owner couldn't go forward, but now we can. And we were so intent on getting the project getting forward, we missed a date at the Coastal Commission. It was, I think Brenda realized that and made a call, eight days late. The Coastal Commission also had a lot of problems with the virus. They closed their doors, they were all working at home. All, all of the stuff that were special conditions have all been approved. It took us a year and a half to get the Coastal Commission to approve all those special conditions which were given to them in a timely manner. By the time they finally approved it, it was in January, February, March, we had four months left on. months left on, on the agreement. This is a good project. There's all good about this project. This project has a hostel, so that children from the, you know, inner city can take a bus ride and go and, 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 and visit the, the marina and the, the institute. You know, in the 1970s, I was one of the master planners at that institute, and the dream was is that children could go and learn about the ocean, you know? Learn about ocean level rise. Learn about plastic in the, in the water that's, that's hurting, hurting the thing. Is that all the time I get?
Keep going. You've got another minute.
Okay. This is a good project because it provides an information center. You know, in the 1970s, when they, you know, thought of an information center, we didn't have this. An information center that we are designing will link everything in the city, and it's a place to meet. I want to go, I'll meet you for coffee at the courtyard in the project, which is visible from the street. And from that courtyard, we could go hike all into the hills. This project provides for that. This project provides for a great opportunity to have a glass of Chardonnay and look at the ocean. Or this, this project also is a, is a boutique hotel, so young people, you know, can go and stay at the hotel at a reasonable price. It's got four, four, four parts to it. It's the, it's the hostel. When we put the hostel, we didn't put it in the back of the project, no, we put it right in the front. When we organized the whole design, we worked with the neighbors, and we blocked out the view, so that the, the project fits exactly right into the, the chunk that was taken out of that hill 20 years ago.
I do need you to wrap it up, please.
And we don't understand why the, there's such opposition to this. This is a great project for the city. This helps the city. And I, I haven't been, I haven't heard anybody explain to me why they would be against such a wonderful thing. Retail is, you know, is not a, it's not a live entity anymore, okay? And offices, so if we can all communicate through digital means, that, that's not really a, a need, like maybe it was thought of in the 1970s or 1980s when this thing was put together. This is a great project for the city. This is going to raise the price of everybody's house in the city. This is going to be something the city can be proud of, and I'm glad to be part of it. And I'm really hoping that you see what I see in the goodness of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have no other speakers, so I'm going to close the public hearing, bring it back to the Planning Commission for discussion and recommendation or direction to staff.
I thank both, I thank the architect for his comments, and, you know, I, I would say that it is a great project. And if it were anyplace else in Dana Point on a vacant parcel, I'd have an excavator out there tomorrow morning to help you build it. And my only concern is that the HDCP is, is specific about what the requirements are for that site, and unless we either say that the Coastal Commission's second look at this, their look at it in 2018 constitutes an amendment to the, the HDCP that allows for this use and allows for this, allows for this use and allows for the, this project to go forward, then I think we have to incorporate all of the, all of the, or all of the Coastal Commission's special conditions into our resolution. I think otherwise, we're just kind of trying to put something together. I, I, you know, but for the HDCP, I, you wouldn't, I wouldn't have a comment at all. I, it's just, it's just part of the law that we have here in Dana Point, and I'm just trying to honestly enforce what the rules are, you know? Nothing makes me less happy today than the fact that I have to support what the Coastal Commission is saying. Sure, it's up to the chair, it's not me.
Please.
And, and thank you for that point, Mr. Commissioner. That had been argued ad nauseam, what your point is. And the thing is, the Coastal Commission report allows all exact uses that we have here. They, if you read the report, they did a, a scenario of a maybe or a might. If you understand the history of this project, when it was first proposed, okay, the traffic engineers proposed 40,000 square feet for this project to accommodate retail and, and some office. When they looked at that use, they reduced the size of the, of the, of the project to 35,000 square feet. What we have here with the uses that we have combined is half of the parking that is required for an office use, which is not in demand, and retail use. A Starbucks store of 35, of 3,3,500 square feet, in other words, one-tenth the size of this project, will generate more cars in a day than this car, this project would. This fits comfortably, and it's totally within the guidelines of the thing. It's one of the listed uses, and, and, and everybody has agreed to that, you know, former, former planning, city council, and the Coastal Commission. Everybody has agreed that those are the uses that is outlined and permitted.
Thank you. Anything further, Commissioner Gabbard?
I'd just like to ask council, is it possible to add all of the special conditions?
So I was actually just going to interrupt you and tell you that they are in the resolution. I believe they're Conditions 35 through 48. I've conferred with Ms. Weisn- Weisneski, and I believe that all of the relevant conditions have been included. From my, my look at the math, I think there's maybe two that maybe were not relevant, that were not included, but otherwise, the conditions were included in the new resolution that's before you.
When I, what's that? Because when I looked at it, it was like the opening of the hostel and the compliance and the signage requirement. So, and then obviously, the big one was the, the CCNRs that would be put on title, so that the directors got the ability to go out and enforce this thing. Go ahead.
So staff went through the special conditions and withdrew the conditions that were applicable to the, the project and that would make sense for the city to enforce. You mentioned one of the conditions, the Coastal Commission typically applies to projects is for the, basically the, the resolution to be recorded against the property, and that basically just puts future property owners on notice that they do have these pending or subject to these conditions. It's not changed the city's enforcement mechanisms. The city certainly has the ability to enforce these conditions of approval through its municipal code, regardless of whether or not they're recorded against the property. So if the commission wants us to add that condition, we certainly can, and it just, it's not something we typically do.
That's all I have.
Okay. And Commissioner Opal, did you have any further questions?
No, I don't have any further questions.
Or comments?
No. No, I know that when we originally approved this, we spent a lot of time walking through this, walking through the different areas, what the requirements were, what was allowable. And at that time, we agreed that this was, did meet all of our standards, all of the requirements, and I haven't changed my thought, and I would be still supportive of it at this time.
Great, thank you. Commissioner?
I don't have any further comments, but I, I do, I'm a little bit concerned about this condition that Commissioner Gabbard wants in, and I'd like a clarification from council, if this is okay to add that as a condition, special condition.
Which specific condition are you referring to?
So I'm not sure if it's in the staff report, but I actually just emailed it to you. But it refers to...
Specifically, the conditions imposed by the Coastal Commission.
So all the special conditions have been incorporated. Commissioner Gabbard had identified one commission condition that relates to recording of the resolution of approval.
Correct.
Against the property.
Yes.
And that is something, as I mentioned, the commission can apply to the project. So I could find the language here, let's see. So the condition, the purpose, as I mentioned, was for to notify future property owners, but it'd be a deed restriction that we recorded prior to issuance of the grading permit, and it would be accorded against the property that would be reviewed prior to the city, prior to recordation, that would be executed against the property, basically just identifying that pursuant to the permit, the city has authorized the development of the subject property, and imposes the conditions of this permit as CCNRs on the use and enjoyment of the property.
Correct. Yeah, that's, that's precisely what I'm...
You're looking for.
Yeah, so that would be somewhat abnormal for the city to require. It's something that we could require. From a legal standpoint, we can enforce the conditions, regardless of whether or not there's a deed restriction on the property. So I don't see the usefulness in that necessarily, on the one hand. On the other hand, there is a thought process that recording deed restrictions on property provides additional notice to future purchasers. I think anybody who's going to come along and buy a hotel in the coastal zone, hopefully is going to do their due diligence and pull the entitlements.
No, I concur with you, council, that it would be superfluous under those circumstances.
Absolutely.
Thank you for the clarification.
Any other comments?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So I, you know, I was here when the project was originally approved and followed it, and it's unfortunate that the situation the applicant's in, where the project was approved by multiple bodies, including this and several commissioners that are here tonight, as well as our city council and the Coastal Commission, and all but for time, I think, what do they say in real estate, time kills all deals? You know, is, is a real situation here, and I concur with Commissioner Opal's comments. You know, I reviewed the specific issues that Commissioner Gabbard raised tonight relative to use. I know we provided some feedback to the applicant on the hostel, which they made some changes, and have, have not wavered from my support. And if, and if I found issues, I'm not afraid to change my mind either. And I see no reason to change my original recommendation and approval of the, the project, nor would I do that tonight. I don't see any material changes, nor has anything changed locally that would raise an eyebrow, at least in my mind, for a project that was previously approved and made it through not only our staff, but this commission, our city council, and ultimately, the Coastal Commission. And for those reasons, I'm fully in support. I do understand Commissioner Gabbard's concerns, and I certainly wouldn't want to see a project go down in flames over whether we should or shouldn't record something. I think my, for me, a knee-jerk reaction would be to jump in and agree that it's, you know, a nice way to put a ribbon around something. But I also recognize that under all these approvals, including the use permit, we have plenty of power in this city, and a deed restriction or CCNRs certainly aren't going to make us go after the, the owner any more than we already would. So I think it is excessive. It just adds one, one more layer to a very, you know, it's what, we're five years down the road here, and, and they're back, and I'd hate to see another five years pass. I drive by that site every day, and I stare at that wall, and, and I look forward to hopefully seeing something built there in the near future, and I'm in full support of the project tonight. And I'll make a motion that we approve the project, that we approved CDP 21-0007, SDP 21-0019, CUP 21-0008M.
Can I ask that we approve it with the requested date modifications in Conditions 27 and 31?
Absolutely, I would.
Thank you.
I'd actually actually propose to delete Condition Number 31, now that it's applicable any longer, since the roadway improvements already occurred.
Okay.
So I'd add that to the motion. We got, capture that, okay?
So just to be clear, Chair Nelson, does your original motion include the revision to the condition of approval number 27?
Correct. And the modifications that Commissioner Opal raised?
Got it.
That is 27, and then the deletion of 31?
Yep.
Okay.
Correct.
With that, I'll second it.
I believe that passes 3 to 1. Right, we don't need a majority or anything, supermajority here. Okay. Congratulations. Good luck. Okay, moves us on to the next item of our agenda, which is Old Business, Public Art Component for Prado West Mixed Use Project. We have a staff report.
Yes, I want to just say a few words, and then I'll turn it over to the project applicant. This is Old Business because it's related to our project that's under development now, Prado West, and this is one of the final components of the project, which is establishment of their required art program. The city's municipal code requires that 0.5% of the construction costs of a project be dedicated to art that contributes to our, our culture and community. So tonight, the applicant is coming forward in compliance with that requirement. The Planning Commission is the approving body for this concept, and within your staff report is an outline of the expenditures. One interesting approach that the applicant is taking is, and we've seen in the past as our art programs have been one-time expense, basically, to install art, or a fountain, or some type of, of element of a project. In this case, they're proposing three elements. One is a mural that would be constructed facing Del Prado, and the other are some ongoing programs. One is a rotating art concept that would be established in the building that is most westerly, in the corridors that'd be rotating of artists that would be then later auctioned off, and with the idea being the, the revenue from that program could be created to extend the program. The other component of the art piece is actually a music program that would be conducted within the courtyard that is, has been created on Amber Lantern. So that, again, is a program that we see long-term. Since this is an ongoing program, the, the project has been conditioned to ensure that the expenditures are meeting our, our requirements, and that they will be submitting invoices to the city, and ensuring that we feel that they comply with the purpose of the art program. So at, at such time, the end of the program, and we don't feel that expenditures have been meeting our intent, then the applicant would be required to resubmit all extra funds to the city. So with that, I want to turn it over to Dylan. Dylan Barrera is the, with Rain Tree, and he'll provide you some more details about their program.
Good evening. Thank you, Brenda, for that intro. Yeah, good evening. My name's Dylan Barrera. I'm here on behalf of Rain Tree Partners to present the Art in Public Places Program for Prado West. I just want to thank you all for, for being here tonight and, and fitting us on the agenda. I'm happy to be here and excited to show you what we've come up with. As you may recall, Jason Chek was here on August 9th to present preliminary ideas and concepts for the program. Since then, we've, we've taken that feedback, and we've refined the program and officially submitted on September 17th. On October 13th, I presented the program to the Arts and Culture Commission, and we received some positive feedback there. And so I'm here tonight to, to get it over the goal line and, and hopefully start implementing the program by end of year. So given the nature of Prado West and the overall size of the public art fee, we wanted to get creative with the application of the, the art fee. So what we've come up with is a multifaceted and multi-component program that includes visual art, music, and education, and as you'll see, Orange County's very first rotating outdoor arts gallery. Just as a high-level overview of the program, there's three components. The rotating arts component, as you see on this map, will be located, one installation in Hall 1, and two installations in Hall 2. We will be periodically rotating these art installations over the next two years. The next component is the public, in the public square, the music performance and education piece. education piece, and then lastly, a large-scale, permanent mural installation on the facade of J Two, which overlooks the USPS parking lot. These are just the, the application criteria that we intend to address throughout this presentation, and, and if you have any questions, feel free to, to jump in, or I can address them at the end. So for the, the large-scale mural, we're very excited to have secured world-renowned artist Drew Merritt, so we're very happy to have him on the team for this. Drew specializes in photorealism murals and paintings and is, you know, just absolutely phenomenal as an artist. As you can see here, after, after much deliberation, Drew's come up with a lantern concept, which is, you know, inspired by the Lantern District of Dana Point and its rich history. What's not noted on this rendering is there's actually also an augmented reality portion, so people will actually, through their, their phones, be able to view a third dimension of this mural, which really just adds that, that wow factor. The piece itself is called Comfort and Guidance, as I said, inspired by the Lantern District of Dana Point. This plaque will accompany the artwork and will feature a QR code, which will be used to access the AR portion of the mural. The next component is the rotating arts gallery, which we've branded as Hope Halls of Public Expression. There will be three eight-by-twelve-foot rotating art systems that will be installed in the locations noted on that map. There, the program will start, basically, three artwork installations will be installed at time zero. Approximately, you know, six months from then, we would rotate two of the three artworks, and we would continue that for two years. So, you know, the program includes a total of nine unique art installations. In terms of infrastructure, these are the, the wall mounts that would be installed in the hallways. They would accommodate the eight-by-twelve-foot MDO panels, which the artwork would be, you know, installed on. So the, these mounting systems will facilitate easy removal and installation of the artwork as we rotate through the program. As you can see, there's a, a protective clear coating just to prevent any vandalism on the artworks. And the last component of the, the program is a, a musical performance and education event. So we've engaged with a local group called Music Preserves, which focuses on music education and music history, and so we're, we're working to develop a, you know, a music performance that would also include a, a live Q and A and, and interviews, so it would not only be an entertainment piece, but also educational. And we're hoping to integrate that into a larger event, perhaps something like a redo, and just kind of create a really cool event in that public square there. In terms of meeting the criteria for the program, we strongly believe that it enhances the site and the, the surrounding neighborhood. You know, having someone of Drew's caliber come to Dana Point is really, you know, unique and something we're very excited about. The rotating art piece has the, you know, the possibility to be regenerative, so while we're committing to two years of the program, the sale of the, the pieces that have been rotated out can be then used to continue the, the program and, and just increase the longevity of it. And then lastly, a, all of these pieces will be publicly accessible. So with that, here's the budget proposed for the program. As you can see, we, we come in just slightly above the, the public art fee. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Okay, great, thank you. Do any commissioners have any questions for? Go ahead.
Great presentation, Dylan, thank you very much. Couple of questions related to the rotating artwork. How is that going to be, how are the artists selected, or how do they determine what art is going to go in there?
Yeah, for sure. So we've engaged with a gentleman named Brian Snyder, who runs a very similar program down in Carlsbad. It's a public mural, a rotating mural, and so he's going to manage that process for us through multiple avenues. He'll engage, you know, the local arts community to solicit artists for this program. There will also be, on one of the placards, just more information on the program and how artists can get involved and, and who they should contact. And then lastly, Brian will be, you know, working with the, the Arts and Culture Commission of Dana Point, to the extent that they're available and, and want to participate in the program.
All right, thank you.
Couple of questions for you, and thank you for the presentation. Good information. I was excited when I heard about the mural and when Mr. Chek came in and spoke with us, and I'm glad to see it, it's come to where it's come to, and the idea of having some AR is incredible. If you've never seen it, it's, uh, it's hard to explain, but it's pretty cool. I do have a few questions, so I know that there's this two-year commitment, and then, you know, I don't know that I would want to condition the project or even suggest that we do something, but even a commitment that, at the end of those two years, that, you know, that we don't get rid of those panels, that they're still offered up for artwork, and I, I think that's still a good thing? Is that something that you guys could at least commit to?
Yeah, for sure. So, I mean, while we are committed to, to the initial two years, we, we fully intend to, you know, use the proceeds from the sales of the previous artwork, which, which we, you know, believe will, will sell and help continue the longevity of the program. At no point would we keep the, the wall mounts empty. We would definitely have artwork behind there, whether that's the last installation that would remain up or some other avenue. I don't necessarily know at the time, but...
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, if you're just saying that you wouldn't sell all the art at the end, is it not for me?
No, we, we don't want to leave, yeah, the mounts up there empty.
And then the second question, and I know this came up at one point, and I think it's an important one, that, you know, with the art, you guys are spending money, obviously. Are you guys, the artists, being paid?
Yes, they'll, they'll be paid for their work.
Okay. So nobody's working for free?
No.
All right. And then the last question I had relative to the, um, the mural, do you know if that's going to be lit at night? Because that's pretty dark at night, that back wall.
It's, it's something we're, we're looking into, and we've studied. It's, it's definitely something to consider and that we will consider moving forward. For the purpose of this program, we definitely wanted to maximize the fee on the actual art itself and not overload the, the infrastructure budget, so for the time being, it's not included, but, you know, it's, it's something that, that we'll consider and keep an eye on moving forward once it's installed.
Okay. Okay, great. I think that was it for questions for me. Anybody else?
No questions, thank you. Great presentation.
All right, then let's bring it back, or do you have a question, or?
Yeah, just real quickly, and thank you for your presentation. Is, is the installation spots, can they, those be taken over by the Art Commission after the end of the two-year period so that, you know, if, if they want to continue the program, they can?
It would require additional funding for the commission to take on that type of effort, and our commission is, is focused primarily on, um, public, um, art locations, so typically when we have art located on private property, the Arts Commission does not get involved.
All right. To close the, the, I guess, the public here, bring it back to everybody for discussion and a recommendation. Anybody want to?
I'm very supportive of it. I really appreciated the effort that they put into it in our earlier presentation in August, are very consistent with it. I think it brings a lot of opportunity to have various artists in a different variety, so I'm very supportive of it.
Okay. Commissioner Gabbard?
Yeah, I concur with Commissioner Opal. I think that it's a great program. I love the, uh, the lantern. I think that's going to be spectacular, so kudos to you guys for coming up with that. And I, I think it's just going to be a great part of, you know, the, uh, the downtown going forward, so congratulations.
Thank you.
No, I'm also, I support what Commissioner Gabbard said. I, I'm excited about that lantern and the way they do it, so looking forward to the project.
Great, thank you. So I will echo the, the sentiments of my fellow commissioners. I, I, you know, I was pulling into town yesterday or the day before, not pulling, I'm coming up of what at one point, I think, was, what, I don't remember what magazine, but it was lauded as the most, God, I can't remember, Sunset Magazine? Like, one of the worst entrances to Pacific Coast Highway, you know, in the state. It was very not complimentary of Dana Point, and things have certainly changed, and some of that is the, the public art that is part of the entryway now, and I noticed that the elephants are back, and there was one out there the other day, so that's great. And, you know, while I certainly have some fundamental challenges with the idea that it's the private industry's responsibility to provide the public with art, it is our ordinance, and I think you guys have done an absolutely wonderful job of taking what could be a pretty standard, boring, um, box that you have to check, there's a dollar amount, you find an artist, they put a piece, and, you know, most of those have been done, and I couldn't tell you where they are. Because they're, they're a last resort and a, and a last thought, as opposed to what, what you guys have done is amounts to much more than just a, a last thought or checking a box. It's, you know, using your buildings and your space in a way that's going to not only enhance the city, but hopefully the property for a long time to come, and I think you guys should be applauded for that. I won't, I would go even further to say that you took, you know, an ordinance that says to be creative, and you guys went above and beyond, and so I really appreciate it. I'm in full support and look forward to seeing the artwork in the near future. With that, I'll look for a motion from somebody, hopefully.
I move that we adopt the resolution for proposed public art components for the Prado West Mixed Use Project with one correction to the resolution, correcting Gloria Day Lutheran Church Re model to the Prado West Mixed Use Project, the bottom of page one.
Also, we had item number six, which is the short-term rental subcommittee update. Yes, um, as I have emailed the, the Plan Commission, our next meeting will be dedicated to the short-term rental subcommittees' virtual meeting with the public to discuss short-term rentals. So there is a postcard going out to our community, all tenants and property owners, and you guys will probably see this at some point. And so it'll be a successful meeting, and we'll come back to the commission and give you some summaries of that discussion, but you also will have the ability to go on our website to actually watch it yourselves after the fact. So, that's it.
That is just the subcommittee meeting, so the other, so Commissioner Donner, our vice chair Donner, myself, and staff, the rest of the commission would not be attending that?
Yeah, unfortunately, with the passing of a recent bill, AB three sixty-one, we have new rules we have to abide by for virtual meetings, and we didn't meet those requirements, so it's going to be easier for us just to have the meeting dedicated to the subcommittee. If you have more details, I'm sure Jennifer can provide you the, the legal aspects.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Okay, great, thank you. All right, now moving on to the next item. Do we have any staff reports?
Nothing tonight, thank you, but welcome, Mr. Dingra.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner comments, starting around the horn here. Commissioner Opal?
I just want to say, I went to the car show the other week with my son, very, huge turnout in my opinion for that event, so it was enjoyable to go there, and a great day for it as well.
Cool. All right, I don't have anything else to add tonight. Do you have any comments, sir?
Yes, I just want to say that I'm looking forward to working with fellow commissioners, staff, council, and I'm grateful for Commissioner Neal to take some time this morning over a cup of coffee to go over some of the things informally. Thank you.
Yeah, it was my pleasure getting to know you this morning, so you're very welcome. And with that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting.